Good evening and welcome to our Tuesday, November 30th work session of the Stafford County School Board. We are meeting in our chambers. All members are in attendance, so we will not need to authorize any electronic participation.
I have to break you out over there.
Candy fight down here. So Ms. Hall, can you pull the board of who's here, please?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Hollerback?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Dr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. Young?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. Do we have an approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Motion carries unanimously. This evening, I thought I would make a couple opening remarks just based on some of the emails we've been receiving in general. When the school board, or at least it has been the practice of this particular school board and those that I have served on previously, work session is an opportunity to work and to discuss and to bring items forward in a more informal atmosphere. In the past, we have normally met behind us, pre-COVID, little more relaxed. We've done many budget work sessions in there. Maybe the subject wasn't relaxing, but the atmosphere was. Due to COVID and other areas, we are having these in our chambers. I do hope eventually it can go back to having work sessions that are a little more, it's not informal, but I think it also generates more discussion. So in the past, and I believe will continue into this evening, work session is not a time for vote. It's a time to discern, pull out issues, identify future concerns, and get maybe a straw idea of where the board wants to go. So I just wanted to give that as a broad introduction to work session format and where I intend for, I think, for it to go this evening. For, so, transportation update. I think we all, it looks like we have a pile of materials. So what I'm going to do is, it looks like Dr. Towery is up first, so I'm going to allow, I'm going to turn that over to her for introduction and we'll go from there.
Madam Chair, I'm going to make just a couple.
Sure. I'm sorry, Dr. Jones.
That's okay. First of all, you know, you've gotten accustomed to having comparative data, so you'll see some of the comparative data you've seen in the past, but I do also want to let you know, one of the things, you know, we were doing is, we were looking at, we had a third-party vendor, TransFinder, that was examining some of our data. We would have liked to have given that to you in advance, but we got the final report today from TransFinder. So we've got some preliminary data, which we've extracted some of that, but we got the final report this afternoon from TransFinder. So just wanted you to be aware of that.
Excuse me. May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do we have that final report?
The board has not received it yet because the staff received it the first time this afternoon.
Okay.
So we've extracted some things from that final report, but we haven't shared that with the board yet.
Can we get a copy of that tomorrow?
You'll get a copy of it.
Thank you.
All right, then I'm going to turn it over.
Okay. Good evening. I did want to highlight just a couple things. One is, you should have a copy of the slide stack, so feel free to obviously write questions, notes, et cetera, on that, any questions you want to have. We are getting to a point in the week-over-week data analysis where we're enough weeks into the school that it's getting a little excessive to keep putting it into slides, so we've moved the bulk of that data over into kind of these attachments to go through that work, okay? And then we'll kind of do more high-level analysis in the actual presentation. So I'll kind of kick things off and then I'll send it over to Mr. Baldwin when we get kind of to more of the logistical, day-to-day operations, data points. So just a few updates since our last time, since we have continued to kind of refine and add to this data set as we've been going through it this year. The biggest shift since the last time is, we did get kind of confirmation that a 10-minute load time in the afternoons is kind of the standard industry buffer to add in. And so for quarter two, we did adjust the afternoon times to build in that 10-minute load time. That's, of course, kind of already built in in the morning when you tie it to a bell schedule because you've already built in that buffer, but this now adds it to the afternoon. We also did some work around examining and identifying kind of routinely late bus routes and then also kind of schools where we're seeing higher levels of tardiness, which we'll get into later on.
Can you make sure that you are close to that mic? I'm sorry.
I'm very low voice. I just want to make sure.
Exactly. So I was just going to slide you over towards. Thank you.
So some lingering limitations that we still have. Obviously, you do have, you know, blips with GPS data. There's one week where we had, VersaTrans actually had some server issues to an extent that we ended up tossing that week. It was our Veterans Day week, so it was already a very small sample size. And then by the time you pulled out that server data, it was not worth including anymore. So you are going to have those types of things when you're looking at GPS data. It's just part of, we like technology to work all the time, but sometimes there's challenges with it. The other thing I just want to kind of remind everyone to keep in mind is, because we are kind of building this data set as we go through the week, and this isn't something we've historically done as a division, the current data set is still very small. And so small shifts are going to, you are going to see kind of routine small shifts as part of normal day-to-day operations and standard errors of measurement. So you'll see even when we cover some bell times later, I kind of highlighted one time that, you know, seemed delayed because there was a medical emergency that day that, you know, kind of automatically kicked that clear time to later in the day. So just kind of keep that in mind. I think we're looking at about 21 days in quarter two so far. So it's just, you know, worth keeping in mind. So average delays by week, as noted, the full week-by-week is in the handout. Just wanted to kind of highlight week-over-week kind of a progression. So if you compare week five to week 10 to week 15, you can kind of see that shift. I am focusing on this primarily in the morning because we did not go back to adjust in the afternoon in quarter one. This wasn't enough time to go back and redo all of those calculations, so I am focusing on the morning in this week-to-week from quarter one to quarter two. Same data set, but again, kind of looking at those routes by those intervals that we've been looking at. But again, kind of that week five to week 10 to week 15. So obviously, you can see the significant drop when the time schedule is implemented. That was actually during week 10, and then kind of some gradual improvement since then as more drivers have continued to onboard. So this is, to give a little bit of perspective in terms of when the last bus is cleared, obviously, the 2020-21 school year, there was such a small number of students riding transportation, it's not really worth including in here, but this does give an idea of somewhat comparable weeks from 18, 19, 19, 20, and 21, 22. 18, 19 is a slightly different week because we were trying to do the week before Thanksgiving with all of them for consistency. We obviously don't have this week yet to include the week before Thanksgiving. In 18, 19, we had some early ice weather, snow days factored in there that affected things, so we didn't feel like it was going to look significantly later and wasn't really a fair comparison. So we can kind of do more of a true apples-to-apples by the next time.
Are we holding our questions?
All right. So getting into kind of looking at some routine tardiness, two different methodologies we took here are kind of doing some school analysis with an identification of schools with 10% or more late routes in quintile intervals, and then the percentage of routes greater than 15 minutes past the bell ring. So if you look at page... 13 and 14, that's that school analysis piece. Yes, sorry. And the, essentially, an appendix. You can take a look at that. What I do want to point out, and Dr. Shutz, if you want more of the statistical analysis, she's happy to explain that further. But what you can see in kind of the far-right column is the percentage of routes at a particular bus that are late, any amount late, and then the percent of that school's routes that are 15 minutes, over 15 minutes, if that makes sense. So if you're looking at the top of page 14, Brookpoint High may have 40, almost 45% of percentage of routes that are late past the loading buffer. 17% of those are 15 minutes past that buffer. Past that 15-minute piece. Then on page 15, you can see the route analysis version of that, which focused on identifying routes that are late 50% of the time or more. And I just found a typo. Sorry. I got to adjust that. So we did, in looking at that interval, you can see on page 15, those that were, the number at each school that fit that category. And I will hand it over to Mr. Baldwin to talk about the third-party route and schedule analysis.
Thank you, Dr. Towery. Good evening. Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Jones. As we continue this with the preliminary findings from the TransFinder report, you've just gotten a sample of the summary, and what we're going to do is just talk, give you some high-level reviews, and definitely later on, you can review the full report for yourself. But some key takeaways from the TransFinder report was that the most significant driver shortage is since the 1990s, when the new CDL and drug testing regulations were enacted. So we had to do some historical comparison. And has there ever been a time before this that we've had, we've been in a driver shortage like we have nationwide? And this was historical, the point where we have some similarities right now. Some of our major issues affecting operations is the limited time gap between our bell tiers and, of course, our driver shortage. Some of the things they, what we talked about, we shared to help decrease some of that is implementing a longer walk-to-stop distance when safe. Right now, by policy, we have some guidance between .2 miles, two tenths of a mile up to a mile for elementary, going all the way up to .4 tenths of a mile for high school. And so those are some of the things that we may want to try to review and see if it will help us by implementing a longer walk-to-stop. And then our bell time scenarios. So we were able to share some scenarios and get feedback, and two of the scenarios included in this presentation, and there are additional scenarios in the full report for longitudinal consideration. The bell time analysis from TransFinder accounts for the mainstream only. Additional buses for special occasion, other areas were not taken into account. So what you will see in this report is just our mainstream for the elementary, middle, and high, so it would not include the specialty programs. So as you see here, based off the adopted schedule to start the school year 2021, quarter one, the metrics in this schedule, TransFinder estimates the following bus needs: 162 buses in the morning peak and 216 buses in the afternoon peak. And this was based off the current schedule in which we started school. When we submitted the adjusted schedule, and primarily what we have been monitoring for our quarter two, the metrics, TransFinder suggested that we would need 138 buses in the morning peak and 195 buses in the afternoon peak. All right. So as we continue, move forward, we have the capacity updates, and this is about the driver recruitment and our school bus capacities. So as to date, the recruitment updates that we have are what we've done each month in terms of producing new drivers to fill our void. So in August, we had two. Moving to November, we've released 19 drivers. We currently have 15 trainees waiting for behind-the-wheel. These are folks that are 60% done where they've already received their CDL learner's permit, so they have to do the behind-the-wheel training, take the actual CDL road test, which they will pass, and then we can release them to drive. So to date, we have had a total of 50 drivers join our driving team since August. That is something that I am patting my driver trainers, my entire team, because they have been working eight days a week to try and train folks and get them on the road successfully. And so this number 50 is a significant milestone for us. In many districts, they do that in a year, and we've managed to do it in a couple months. So hands off, hats off to my team and everybody that has been supporting us from that standpoint. Bus driver-to-route comparison. So right now, as it stands, when we pulled this out of our system, we have a total of 177 contracted drivers for mainstream, and then we have a total of 53 for our special needs programs. We have a total of 466 total routes and 156, and that's 466 for our mainstream and 156 for our special programs. So what that means here is, these are the number of routes that the buses run per school at AM and PM. I'll break down the bus driver-to-route comparison by tiers. 99 routes are slated for our elementary tier, mainstream, and 38 special needs. Now, this number, I will tell you, has fluctuated from the first presentations that we've shared because we have, and consistently are combining, reducing, we've had to add routes in to accommodate for student management, for new enrollments, overcrowdedness that we have incurred right now because we are getting buses, we're getting to school on time, more of our parents are starting to put their kids on the bus, and we are starting to experience some overcrowdedness. So we've had to add additional buses where we can. For our elementary shift two, we're using 83 mainstream routes and 33 special needs. Middle schools, there's 139 mainstream routes with 42 special needs routes. High schools, there's 145 mainstream routes and 43 special needs routes in place from there. And again, this number has fluctuated since the beginning of school. So we've tried to maintain it, but we are constantly looking. Matter of fact, the team today shared with me about some updates that are being put in place for next week, actually for the end of this week, for creating a new middle school route to help out of reducing the travel time for a high school route. So that is something that we really do not stop. Buses. I know that's been another topic about when, or do we have enough buses, and when are we going to get the buses that we've ordered? So just tried to share the number. In May, you approved an order of 15 buses, and we're due to get these buses mid to late January of 2022. And we have five mainstream with 10 special needs buses here. September 14th, you approved another 12 buses, and so we've got a delivery date for those 12 mid to late February. In October, you approved 15 additional buses, and we are still waiting for that build date in place. Right now, everything is in a queue, and of course, with the industry, they are experiencing parts shortage, so we are waiting to get that exact build date. But when we do, we will definitely share it with you. And Mr. Fulmer brought forth the purchase of some mini buses. These are some buses that will not require a CDL, and we're hoping to have receipt of these buses no later than December the 10th. And hopefully, there, short after, we will put these buses into play for helping out with some of our specialty type runs.
Those are non-passenger buses?
Yes, sir. Non-passenger buses. Conclusions, our data conclusions here. Our bell time adjustments have helped significantly in improving our on-time arrivals. Geography is still a lingering factor for us on the travel distance between school and students' homes. The third-party analysis confirms the need for additional tiering spacing based on the current capacity. Other contributing factors to improvements include our onboarding of additional drivers and continual readjustments of routing as opportunities for improvements are identified. And with that, I will open it up for any questions.
All right. Who wants to start? I figure we'll give everybody one or two questions, and we'll kind of go around if there's something.
Anybody want to start us off? Dr. Chase, you want to start us off?
Yep. So, and these questions may be for Dr. Towery or maybe for you. So at the very beginning, you talked about additional build-out of transportation data infrastructure, adjustment to afternoon times for industry standard 10 minutes. What is, I wasn't clear. So have we added another 10 minutes to the day? What does that mean?
Remember, when I brought the data forward, both of you are doing it again. When I brought the data, when we brought the data before, one of the things I kept saying is, I know, we know that we are over-representing the afternoon tardies because we were tying everything to bell time, right? So if a school bus hadn't literally crossed whatever GPS indicator point in the circle, by the time the bell rang, they were captured as tardy.
So you're just analyzing the data now with saying, it's not tardy unless it's left 10 minutes after the bell, because you get 10 minutes to load the students?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. And then my second, again, it's just my, trying to understand stuff. So the late, the clear times, when it says, where did it go, a clear time of 5:20, is that the time that they left the school, or is that the time the buses are done with their routes?
That is the time that we're done with the routes. They've dropped off the last student.
Okay. So 5:20 is not the time that somebody is being picked up from school. 5:20 is the time that they were dropped, the last child was dropped at their house.
Correct.
Terrific. That, I just was like, please tell me it was not that. Great. Thank you.
All right. Who wants to go next?
One quick question. So you did talk about the afternoon bell time. Did you also look at the morning bell time? You did both, morning and afternoon?
Didn't adjust the morning because there's kind of already a load time built into the morning, essentially, you know, because if they aren't in their seats when the bell rings, you're definitely late. So you've already kind of given them.
Okay. And so when you did the, when you did the data, did you just add the additional time? So in other words, the fact that we changed the afternoon, you just say, okay, this is zero to 15, and then you just say 15 to 30, 30, 45?
Right. So basically, the formulas in the Google Sheet, Excel sheet that we're collaboratively using to build this data set were adjusted to account for that 10-minute buffer period.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Who's next? Ms. Healy, you want to start us?
Did you factor in, in any way, the change in the hours of our school day? Because prior to this change, you know, our high schools got out at 2:20, and the elementary schools got out at 3:40. But now we've got elementaries getting out at 1:40, so that's about, what, a lot of minutes difference between 1:40 and 2:20, 40 minutes. So that's 40 minutes that it looks like we've gained to transport the students.
In particular for the afternoon?
Yeah, I'm looking at the afternoon.
Right.
Actually, I'd like to look at the morning. It would be helpful for me. And you had a nice chart there that showed all the ending times, if we had the beginning times as well. See, that's the ending times for now. So the elementary school starts at 7:45. What did, high school started at 7:40, was it? 7:40?
Right.
I'm talking about the prior. I'm trying to compare apples to apples.
So Ms. Healy, in the TransFinder attachment, there is an analysis of some additional schedules. So I only put the two we've done this year in the slide stack, but the handout from TransFinder includes kind of the original proposal from last spring, the one adopted, the one we've moved to this fall, the one we had in, I think it includes the one we had in.
Yeah. We've given scenarios, the past, the previous, before COVID scenario where high school was first.
Is that any, I didn't see those hours in here. I'm just missing them. If you could point me to the page that has the prior hours.
So there are scenarios eight and nine, and there are 84 and 85. That gives you, what we have now is scenario eight in the summary, and then scenario nine was the original bell time before this school year.
And one of the things I do want to reiterate as we, as you look at the analysis there from TransFinder, is that they're focused on mainstream buses. It does not include those special needs buses, anything we need to do for McKinnon Vento students, those types of things. So just keep that in mind. The reality is, you have a higher need than what's shown there. Now, some of those, those mini buses will, I think, are going to be helpful with that, but just as additional context.
So this little line right here where it says expected buses in the morning and in the afternoon is malarkey. It means nothing to us right now because we don't have the full scope of what we're trying to get to the bottom of. How many buses do we need on the road? Well, they're telling us 167, but now you're sitting here telling me that that's not a true number because we're not taking into account special needs and all the other?
Right. Just for mainstream, for the mainstream. So these are planning, planning numbers that we can start with. So adding in, because special needs are more of, they're really fluid. So what you may start out at the beginning of the school year, three months down the line, it may change. And so we're going to add buses. We may have to pool buses from the main, excuse me, from special needs, more so from mainstream. So it's easier to plan with our mainstream buses versus our special needs buses.
And they're going to add in a buffer.
Yes.
When did we, when did we sign on with this consultant to prepare this report? Was this back when school started in August? Was this back when school started in August?
In September. But initially in September, it wasn't a bell time study. We were looking at route efficiency. We were going.
So this is three months of work that we're looking at?
Just about, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I'm looking at the page numbers at the bottom of this TransFine report. And it's a couple pages out of the seventies and eighties, I think. So I'm assuming that there's a lot more to this report than what we have in front of us.
Yeah. Again, this is what, we just got this today.
Okay. So we're going to get that tomorrow. That's the, that's the copy that we were talking, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. And just to keep in mind, we tried to base it off three factors. One is making sure the instructional day was at what needed to be. Making sure that our resources with having buses, number of drivers, number of buses, and also the travel distance, being able to have enough time between each tier to get kids, to pick up kids, bring them back, pick up another load, and still be on time. And that's where this shift where we made has improved, have shown significance. That if we have enough time in between our tiers to get our kids to school, then we can have more of an on-time success. So those were the three things that we talked with TransFinder about in the scenarios, for them to be able to show, so that when the time was ready to make a decision on changing the bell time, if we were going to do that, we had some factors to base it off of.
Okay. So a quick softball question. Routine tardy, routine, or routes analysis, the morning, Brookpoint High School, there's one. Number of routes that are more than fifteen minutes late fifty percent of the time. Can you tell me what route that is?
I can't off the top of my head right now.
Okay.
You can take a look at it because probably you want to be careful about getting them done.
Okay. And then not-so-softball of question then, if the one's not, if the one's not quite answerable, the afternoon routes. We win with seven. I would like to know what those routes are, too. I'm curious. Things have been awful quiet lately because of the holidays and stuff. But if we still have that many routes, seven, just for Brookpoint, I tend to believe that my folks are just busy with the holidays and are still very upset about kids not being picked up and taken home on time. So I'd like to get those tomorrow, please.
Can I go back?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just didn't want to lose my, my place. All right. So, so the reason I'm looking at the pre-COVID schedules and the current schedules is that we've reduced the instructional day.
Yes.
Dr. Kizner gave the proposal. I thought it was about thirty, forty minutes, thirty minutes. And now I know we, as a board, and I'm the one that suggested it because I wanted to have more kids there when we started school, cut ten minutes. But there was another thirty minutes that was cut from the instructional day. So if we're looking at pre and current, it seems that we somehow have to make an adjustment for that. Because the longer they're in school, the less time there is for these tiers. I mean, one of the reasons I think we have more time for the tiers is because of that, that cut. Because I remember Dr. Kizner told us when he brought this plan forward that this was going to address the transportation issues and that we shouldn't have transportation issues if this went forward. And I think part of the rationale was that there'd be, you know, there'd be less instructional time, but there'd be more time for the buses to get the kids to school on time. So what, is the transportation consultants, do they have that information? And do they factor that into any of this analysis? That the pre-COVID and the current schedules are actually a thirty-minute, you know, difference?
So, yes, ma'am. So in the detailed report, there's a breakdown. We'll tell you the number of buses that were needed for each tier. And we'll give you some overlapping information that there's a number of buses that start on Tier One, but they actually will deliver to Tier Two. And so you want less of those buses as possible so you can have as many drivers operating on one tier at a time as much as possible. And that is laid out for you in the detailed report in a chart that you will be able to read and see the number of buses by tier, by scenario.
Yeah, I understand that. But back to my question. You know me, I don't stop until, either give me an answer or say, I'll get you that answer. Either one, either choice A or choice B. But the consultant that prepared this report, did they take into consideration the fact that there is a thirty, right now it's forty, but let's say it's thirty because that ten minutes is temporary, hopefully, thirty-minute difference in the instructional day timeframe?
So the consultant's looking at your start and end times by tier. So the amount of time that you have during the instructional day plays a factor in when your start and end times are. But the key in driving how many drivers you need and what the consultant is looking at is how much time you have between your tiers. So that's a county decision, a board decision on how we determine what our bell schedule is. And then that drives how many drivers you have. So if you want a seven-hour day, that's fine. It depends on when you start your day and when you end your day. So you can change your parameters and say, we're going to start at seven AM and our last school is going to get out at five PM. And that's going to give you more bell time and more time during the day. But that's what's going to drive your, we've got to set that. And then that's what's going to drive how many buses you need. And so the consultant looks at that, but they don't determine how many hours we have in the instructional day. They're determining how much time we have, or they're factoring based on how much time we have between the school day, the tiers.
I get that. But I'm, and I'm not the consultant and I'm not the analyst here. But if I were looking at it and I was looking at pre and current, and the pre had thirty extra minutes of instructional time, if we took that away to even out the instructional days, there would be thirty more minutes in the pre for the tier time. No?
We didn't do that, though. What happened is.
Well, we didn't do it if the consultant didn't consider it.
We, no, we did not gain when we shifted, when we shifted, when we shifted the schedule, we did not add, it did not add additional buffer time. So the original bell schedule from May still had forty-five minutes. When we adjusted to try and get high school out before four and elementary starting a little bit later, that shrunk that bell gap to that thirty minutes, thirty minutes, thirty minutes. So that lost that, it's the bell gap time is what drives the transportation buffers. So you can do thirty minutes in a system if you have additional, you're just going to need more drivers, you're going to need more buses, et cetera.
Madam Chair?
Okay. I, I'll, I'll read the report. I, just in my mind, if you're comparing apples to apples, then you're going to have the same amount of instructional time in the two days. If you have more instructional time on one than you have in the other, then to me, that means there's less time in between the tiers. But I'll look forward to reading this eighty-five-plus-page report tomorrow. Aye.
I just want to comment.
And maybe you don't answer the questions. Thank you. I need a board.
I just want to follow up on what Ms. Healy's saying. Basically, I, I think what we are forgetting here is that, yeah, I'm going to say it, COVID. And that you cannot compare 2019, pre-COVID, and currently, simply because there's different time. We're just looking at the routes, the time, the present time, not comparing what was done before. The other thing, I'm wondering, did you all take into consideration the time that you're using to clean the buses and do that, that, you know, mitigation time? Is that taken into consideration in all of this? I, I don't think so. So, so that is significant time, from what I understand, that is being used in between routes.
The drivers rush to do a quick sanitize in the hot-touch areas between each tier as much as possible. And then at, of course, at the end of the day, we're still sanitizing.
Exactly.
But in between tier, they're, they have wipes and they're doing the hot-touch areas.
I, I don't see that taken into consideration anywhere. I mean, you all have some bus drivers here that are mechanics and cleaning and drivers and counselors and everything. And we're concentrating on the time. Is this considered a success rate right here, the fifty bus drivers? That, that's considered a good success rate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so, yeah, I just want to know how many routes are left open? And, and that's my question.
So currently, we have seven between three elementary schools. And these are unassigned routes. And they belong to three, three elementary, three elementary schools. Park Ridge, Anthony Burns, and Kate Waller-Barrett.
Oh.
So those are the ones that are still being doubled.
Wait a minute. Those are two of my, those, two of the three are mine.
Yes, ma'am. So.
I'm concerned.
You're going to get us more buses next year, right, Ms. Healy? Go get the drivers. You get.
So right now, because those are singletons, we consistently, we still have those doubled.
I'm assuming three of those fifties are going to these three schools, correct? Yes?
The fifteen.
Yes?
So you currently have fifteen tardies, right?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Did I hear yes?
Along with some, some buses, we will get them there.
I say yes to that.
New buses.
Okay. I'm going to move on to, I'm going to go to Dr. Warner, then Ms. Randall, you'll be up next. Okay?
So you talk about consolidating the longer to walking to bus stop in order, I'm sure, so you have more kids in one place, it's easier to make one stop than three. But I'm concerned about elementary school students walking too far, especially getting picked up at, you know, seven-forty when it's midnight outside.
Yes. Yes.
So what, what factors will go into consideration in making those decisions?
We're building a bus stop criteria list. There are plenty of organizations that offer criteria to use to verify what makes a bus stop safe. Obviously, we talk about sidewalks. If there's a sidewalk in place, then we're prone to put a bus stop in loca, there. So that's definitely one of the pieces. And then just the location and distance, we take that into consideration. It will not be, we're not able to make a one-size-fits-all type scenario. So we would have to evaluate each location.
I guess I'm a little concerned about how you assign these unassigned routes when two of these schools are still our Title I schools. So I know that there's probably transportation delays with that. And I just feel like I, I'm not understanding the priority of how you go to assign a route. Like I said, when there's two of these schools, and Dr. Warner alluded to it earlier, and I, is that Kate Waller-Barrett had, at the beginning of the year, seven unassigned routes. Again, a Title I school, a Tier Two. And now they still have unassigned routes. I just don't understand the preference of which schools will get the routes versus which schools are not.
Right. Right. So that is something that we're taking a better look at. I think that the team has been working on some past practices. And so we're trying to do better at assigning those. But in the meantime, what I can offer, those seven runs that are being doubled, those kids are getting to school as close to the bell as possible, and some before time. So there's not really been an issue from those schools about those seven runs getting to. They've been able to work it between the driver and the schools and parents that the bus drops off their first load in a good enough time and then is able to go out and get a second load and bring that load back by the time the bell rings, if not before.
Then I would also want to know, is, we're looking for success stories here. We started with a number probably of double runs, and I think we even heard triple at the beginning of the year. But how many schools had we, have we started with, with double bus runs? And how many are we down to now if we're looking for success?
Well, you can pretty much.
And I know that varies. If there's like, you know, a driver out, then become, you know, and not a sub or something, it becomes a double bus run. I do understand that. I'm just looking for general picture. How, how big were we? How small are we?
Well, we were pretty big when we started. Because just about every school with the vacant runs, we ended up assigning a driver to it. So just about every school had a double run coming out. So to take that number, that was, I think, gosh, combined, may have been close to a hundred. To, now that we're down to seven, it's significant. And then that just, that's just, that's just unassigned, that we did not have a driver. I can have a driver. I may not have the bus now. But we're getting that in place to accommodate that. So I'm hoping pretty soon that we will be able to place those seven routes with a driver. We have to be a little bit more strategic in how we have that route. Because those are not paired with like another middle or high school. So we want to, for payroll purposes, try to balance that out with giving someone a route that they can combine enough hours in the morning, enough hours in the afternoon, to make it worthwhile.
And then what are we doing still about our, our high school programs and their transportation challenges? For on-time, how many buses are we still late with those and currently?
So for those buses, we provide the buses for the needs of those students. So we have our times, which is in the morning about nine forty, nine thirty, nine forty, somewhere where they leave the base schools going to their travel school. There's not an issue. I think we had an issue when we changed the schedule because of the number of kids and the location. In which we had one bus basically going from Mountain View, Colonial Forge, the fire training center, and Brookpoint all together in one. That wasn't going to work. But that was an issue with the number of kids. And so that has since been resolved. And right now, Ms. Randall, to my knowledge, everything seems to be running well. We're still fluid in terms of critiquing and making sure that we have enough buses. But overall, there's about forty-one total buses that we're utilizing every day. Sixteen in the morning, I think it's sixteen in the afternoon, at that three-twenty mark when we're shelling kids back to their home schools. And in between the day is about eighteen buses that we're utilizing. So as far as students being late, I've not received any phone calls about that from our schools, asking where buses are from that manner. So we're, we're running pretty good right now.
Thank you.
All right. I have a couple. When you talk about contracted employees, help me, I don't know, for, for Mr. Burnett, it's probably, I didn't think I'd have to be. Tell me what that means, a contracted employee from a bus driver perspective.
So that means we, we are employing that person for a set number of hours per day. And we assign them a route. And usually, based off the hours on that route, are their contract hours. So it may be a six-hour contract, a six-and-a-half-hour contract, up to a seven-and-a-half-hour contract. Versus someone who is an hourly or a sub that they just drive. So basically, when an hourly person works, they get paid. If they don't work, they do not get paid. The contract person earns leave, sick leave, in that standpoint.
So as we've brought employees or new drivers in, is it the, are those who want contracted employee status able to be accommodated to get contracted? Because I believe that also would include benefits, health insurance. Like you said, accrete, leave, maybe VRS.
Yes, ma'am. They are. As soon as that person has been released to drive, they begin subbing. And within that week, by the following week, we contract them to put them in. And then they are assigned a route.
Okay. Because I know there's some confusion or some concerns in that area, but that can be dealt with elsewhere. Looking at some of these, well, let me ask this then. Contracted, if you, as we go forward looking at the budget, from a budget standpoint, it appears that there are special. it appears that there are special needs bus drivers and mainstream bus drivers. So, to talk about, we have, I'm gonna make up numbers, so everybody don't, I'd like to say we have five hundred bus drivers, 'cause I can sort of round with that number, 'cause, okay, so we're hoping for. But if, we can't say that we have then five hundred bus drivers available for all routes, potentially? Or no, would, can you be pulled off? 'Cause I don't know, special needs buses may need additional training, I'm not sure. I'm just trying to, I, I wanna make sure that when we're hiring, we aren't over saying that because we have five hundred, I just like that number now, um, bus drivers, that then we have five hundred bus drivers available. 'Cause I think some of that terminology has confused at least this board member in the past on, so how can we address that? Does that make any sense where I'm going? Maybe this is Mr. Fulmer, he may be watching me going where I'm going, but.
Well, we try to match contracted drivers with the number of routes that we have. Right now, we, but we work off our FTE. So my FTE max is two-hundred-and-twenty-five. So I have met that requirement for our FTE component. Now, that is per se for each route. But we always need extra, in terms of subs, uh, for the number of calls that may occur, to have that pool of available drivers ready to fill in. And any of the specialty-type requests that are being made, that I may be able to pull a pool driver, a sub-driver, and not move the assigned driver, the route driver, to the route. I can keep them on their route, and take a pool driver to s, to do something special for me on that side. So I would like to make sure that we have more. So that five hundred number sounds very good to me. But definitely to have that number over what the total number of routes that I need.
I guess, well, guess what I'm getting at, is saying, we want X number of FTE contracted drivers to drive a mainstream bus. We want X number of contracted drivers to drive a special needs bus. We want to have just like a substitute pool, and I know that's not the right name, but whatever, this number of drivers. I think that is more, well, for me, that's more helpful, because it tells us what we are looking for, what we are hiring for. Because saying that we may have hired fifty drivers, I, I, I'm just saying, I, I, and I think that's great, I'm not, but I think the more we drill down on exactly who, who we have, who we're contracting, and how they can be used on the routes. It's not just X amount of people, X amount of routes, and they just mash, or, I don't think they do.
Right. So, we train everybody on everything. So there's no distinction. And I know that probably has come up because of the number of CDL drivers that we've been able to pull from other counties, where other counties just train particularly on special needs or mainstream. They don't do both. So people come thinking, or have that perception, that we train like their past employer, and we do not. So folks are trained on our mainstream, and they are trained on our special needs. So we get to decide. Now, they may be able to request a special needs. And based upon the need and review of their work, they may be able to be placed or assigned a special needs route. But no one comes through the door with the expectation that I'm only gonna drive special needs, or I'm only gonna drive mainstream. We teach them to do it all. And then they, based upon a, a, a wish or request, we could grant them either way. But that's based on the availability of our routes.
Okay, I'm just trying to feel like, that we can really understand what we're, what we're, um, hiring there. Let's put on our pre-COVID hat, it's nice to look back sometimes, not on everything, but some stuff. Previously, and this is maybe not a transportation question, it may be a instructional question. I know we used to have tutoring runs with buses that would go to schools. First, are we doing them now? And are we doing them at the same level or level we would like to be doing, since we keep talking a lot about learning loss?
Right.
I know that's partly a mixed question.
Well, I'll, I'll take part of that. And I just remind you, one of the things that we've tried to do with our schedules, particularly at the middle schools, build an intervention time. 'Cause if you're gonna tutor students, it's best to do it while they're already at school, instead of some, you know. So we do have some after-school programs that we're doing, but what we've tried to do this year is really build the intervention times into the regular bell schedule.
However, there were a lot of programs that we were doing and schools were doing that I'm, I'm personally feeling, as we go forward, we cannot eliminate or not factor in that those needs may become more extreme or desired in the coming months. I know they used to do things for certain schools, and many schools are right around SOL time and other things. And I, again, I'm a speed reader, but not that great of a speed reader when I'm up here. I see some of the potential needs for the buses that are needed in some of these scenarios. But I feel like, are we really factoring in what I believe COVID and other, um, impacts learning loss? I think we're gonna need more, is where I'm, probably where I'm going.
Absolutely, absolutely. That is something that we've taken in consideration and building for next semester, because I realize, we start preparing for that, and, and schools will be able to have some extra funding, that they may be able to offer that. So currently, we do transport an after-school program at Drew Middle School, it's the Twenty-First Century Learning Program. And so we have three buses with that group, and we started that actually the second or third week of school. Yeah, it was pretty early. And that has been going very successful. We pick those kids up around five o'clock every day. And by five-thirty, five-forty, they are cleared, released, back home.
Unless they have to cross Route One, I'm sorry.
But we are anticipating that, and I've already had, um, some of our schools reach out about programs, um, being able to transport. And so, that's what, that pool of drivers never stops. Because, uh, once we get our buses, we'll be able to definitely support our schools in those missions. SOL requests, um, any other special things that we, that may come up, that will benefit the instructional side for our students, we wanna make sure that we can support, so.
Dr. Chase? So, um, I just wanted to say how thrilled I am that we don't have any elementary school students getting to school late in the morning. We were not able to say that pre-COVID, 'cause I was at an elementary school trying to meet my breakfast buddy once a week, and she never got to school. She was consistently forty-five minutes late. So I wanna just really thank you guys for taking care of, of, I mean, I would like to see all the kids at school on time, Brookpoint, I would absolutely like to see that, Mountain View, I would absolutely like to see that. But to me, it's a huge success that we've got all our elementary school students and all our middle school students getting to school on time. And I don't want us to lose sight of that, 'cause I think that's, that's huge. And then I just also wanna thank you all for getting this comparison of the different bell schedules and what the staffing looks like. And I think we'll all be looking at that as we think about the budget for next year, because it does have significant impact on our budget. Thank you so much.
And I second the motion. Thank you very much for the report, for being here, giving us all the statistical information. And for those that want the one through seventy-five pages to read over the holiday, that would be great over there, on that side. Um, in addition, I also wanna make sure that those three schools that we talked about get their buses. And I know the reason why, uh, we're not getting any emails from them, because they're working. We're not getting their emails, and, um, they're not flooding our, our mailbox. But, um, I, I do know that every so often, they call me. And, uh, we know that people that pick them up in the schools and take them and bring them, bring them to school. So I want to make sure that you all continue that good work. Thank you so much.
I just wanna make sure I'm clear on one thing. This ten-minute adjustment, does that, does that mean that if a bus gets there ten minutes after the bell rings, that it's considered on time? Or I, I'm just trying to figure this out, because to me, you're on time if you're there at a minimum before the bell rings, and ideally with time that the bus is unloaded and the kids are in class. But I, I, I can give, give you that, but, but what, what was this adjustment again?
Yeah, so the industry standard is about a ten-minute load time for buses. So I'm gonna use this little semi-circle here, 'cause it kind of resembles a bus loop a little bit. So the GPS might be tied to this orange piece of tape right here. Okay, so there's an orange piece of tape right here. Now, if I had the bus, there's only one bus when the bell rings, it's at that orange piece of tape, right? So all the other buses are behind it. So once that bus loads and it moves, then the next bus comes and crosses that piece of tape, right? Well, that's when their GPS is triggered, right? So unless, you know, so if you're pulling into the bus and you're at the back of the line, by the time you get up to where your GPS is triggered, and all of those kids uploaded at each of those things, and they hit their lockers on the way out once the bell rings and all of that, it's not gonna be the bell time anymore, right? So that's, it's to, it's to build in that load time period, so that we are basically unfairly penalizing ourselves.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not concerned about, well, I'm concerned about all of it, but I'm less concerned about the afternoon loading the kids, you know, after the school end, but, but the beginning. There's no adjustment in the beginning of the day. Okay, so, so the buses that are there before the bell rings versus after, there's, okay, that's, that's what I didn't understand.
Yeah. 'Cause the morning, you do have that load time kinda already built in, but in the afternoon, we were basically unfairly penalizing ourselves, 'cause we weren't accounting for all of that circle time, going to lockers, chatting with your friend on the way out, as you get your homework signed by your teacher or whatever.
They're gonna miss the bus.
I, I just have one, one last request. When we get the, um, this seventy-one, eighty, whatever page report, could we also get the solicitation that was sent out to request this service? I think Chris might have it. Yeah, solicitation, the request for proposal that went out on the street. If you could send that along with that, that'd be great, thanks.
Yes, um, so are we finding then that forty minutes seems to be the ideal gap between tiers? And is that only because of this year? I mean, I mean, I'm just looking, when I looked at the Transfinder report, it just seemed that it, it seemed to be a favored time in the examples that we've been given.
Forty-five is.
Preferred?
Yes, a minimum preferred. And that's gonna be based off the instructional day. So our total instructional day, and the time we start and the time we end. If we can build that buffer in there to have a minimum of forty-five minutes, and from that standpoint, we can definitely support a lot more of what, um, our schools have requests from us.
'Cause noticing even too, um, the numbers of buses needed seem to shift when high school went first versus elementary, um, for the tot, uh, total buses needed. So I, I noticed that seemed to be a trend as well.
And, and I would lobby to look at the afternoon, the number of buses that are needed in the afternoon. And that is really to allow for our travel distance. No matter if the high school's first or our elementary's first, we have to account for the travel distance for the father's kid, and that last drop-off point for the first tier, and that travel time back to that secondary school.
Can you repeat that again, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I'm sorry?
Can you repeat what you just said about no matter what?
No matter what, that travel time, the last drop-off for that last child on the first tier stop, and the travel time back to the second-tier school needs to be within that buffer time. So if you're gonna tell me that I gotta do thirty minutes, but I know that travel time from the last stop to the next school is twenty-five minutes, there's no way that bus is gonna be on time.
It doesn't matter if it's high school or elementary school, is that what you just said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And so, the, the, um, when you're talking about the travel time, do you have, right now, Tier One elementary drivers that are also driving Tier Two elementary, or do they skip and go to middle?
I do have some.
You do have some?
Yes, ma'am.
It depends on like.
It's the length of the route.
Right, if they're closer in, in the North Stafford area versus, yeah, out by me.
So, just to clarify, you have to give a FTE a certain number of hours and a certain number of runs. And how, how they, you pull, how you pool those together to accommodate that is gonna vary. So they may do an elementary school and a middle school, they may do an el, it's just that they have to get those FTE hours in. And however they can orchestrate that so that the driver can get back to the next route in time, is really what drives how those decisions are made.
And that is not new for twenty-twenty-one, that's been going on all along.
Been going on forever.
Just a general practice and assignment.
And do we have high school? You, you mentioned the Drew, but do we, we used to have activity buses to help kids get home from their sports. And I know that everything has shifted later for them, but do we have those activity buses for the high school kids right now?
No, ma'am.
We don't?
No.
Okay.
Well, I also do wanna thank you for all the work you guys have done, and I appreciate that, that we are getting better, and that all of our elementary school and middle school students are getting to school on time. So, and we will get you, we will get you there, Mountain View, Mountain View and Brookpoint, we will get you there. But don't call Ms., don't call Ms. Hollerbeck.
Anthony Burns, Kate Waller Barrett, Park Ridge.
And Park Ridge.
All right, well, I have a couple final ones. Can't ever get off my favorite thing is capacity, but this time it's gonna be in a different route. So when we started the year, the capacity on the buses was diminished, is that correct? Of, it was not at all?
We did it where applicable.
Okay, so all of this is being premised on a full, um, usage of all seats, no social distancing?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that's how this has been looked? Because, I mean, and this is not something I'm asking for, I know it would be difficult. But I would be, when I sit and sometimes do watch the buses arrive, the capacity percentage on some of these buses is not overwhelming. And I can tell you, at least for some parents in, at least my district, part of the reason we're not getting the complaints is they've given up. And they've said they've given up. Now, that doesn't, that's not a reflection, it's just the reality. If parents begin to bring back some of these students, what begins to happen? Because, um, that's potentially more stops, more places. And I know there's some countervailing, but I do know right now, we definitely have parents who have made the decision this year, yes, their kid may have registered to be on the bus, but the kid is not riding the bus, because somebody in the neighborhood picks everybody up, I know they do it, I see them, and takes them all to school. You know, I'm just.
So we've been talking about that plan. And I'm gonna use Park Ridge, because that's probably the most viable, um, school where we will see that first. Embry Mill is a growing community. And right now, we have buses slated that are at eighty, ninety, in terms of a student count. Now, all eighty or ninety kids are not riding the bus, but that is a neighborhood at one point in time will ride the bus, uh, once there. And so, we are already talking about, or trying to strategize how that will happen. And the most simplest piece is have drivers, have buses, because it's gonna come. We want the kids on our, on the buses. And we wanna have, have that confidence where our students and the families put their kids on the bus. But we also wanna make sure that they're not on an overcrowded bus. They're not gonna be on a bus that's gonna break down. And so there are a lot of internal pieces that go into place to make sure that we can ensure a successful trip. So we are planning that, and working it. That's already come up, Hampton Oaks. The drivers do a good, good part of telling our route coordinators what their numbers look like. And because we are not overcrowded on certain routes, we're able to move stops from one bus to another to help accommodate overloads. So as we get them, we deal with them firsthand, but we are trying to be a little bit more proactive and looking where. But we are trying to be a little bit more proactive in looking where that may come at a greater scale to us.
Because I think the data point, and this came up during budget when we were asking about adding because of growth. Okay, you knew I'd get there. I was going to get there somehow. But I can tell you, probably somebody who moves into some parts of my district is probably going to ride a bus. They aren't going to walk to Mountain View. I hope they don't, to be honest, because they may not make it. On more concentrated areas, there may be abilities to walk. And I know we're looking at walking zones. Is there some way to, as we look at these growth numbers, to automatically ratchet up a driver, a bus, or whatever? Because we've got data for three years. We have census data, we have all kinds of data saying where our growth is and that it's coming. How can we, and I'm not good at these numbers, but saying this many, this many people, this many elementary kids is probably going to result in this many routes. Now, I know it is definitely where they live, but how we can begin to build that into the budget with our growth? Because I just think we can't ignore it. So it's maybe more a comment, but I'd be interested in your thoughts.
Madam Chair, this meeting was scheduled to go till 7:30. And I asked for the meeting to start no later than 5:00, and then I accommodated pushing it back to 5:30. So I would really like to get to the rest of the, the rest of the stuff that's on the agenda, if possible.
Sure, can I, I'm going to let Mr. Baldwin answer my question.
It's been a conversation between Mr. Fulmer and myself. And we're actually, we're playing around with a type of growth formula that moving forward, we could tie into that to accommodate the growth of the district. So that is something that we have been discussing.
And I think maintenance should be an additional part of that discussion because as we need more routes, we're going to need more miles. We're going to need more maintenance. And I see the trickle-down of that. So I think it needs to not just be on the drivers because I think we've all heard some about maintenance and making sure that those needs are being met as well in light of that. Do you have one short question?
Okay, I asked this at the last meeting and I knew a different answer, but I just want to clarify. And this will be for, I think, Dr. Jones. Is, we had heard that at some schools, they had different drop-off times for buses and car riders. I mean, the start time of school is what it is, but what they were allowing when kids could be dropped off with buses, sometimes they held buses. We were told they didn't, but we know they did in some cases. So I'm just curious, are all schools, elementary, middle, and high, are they all dropping off students' buses, dropping off car riders at the same time?
No.
No.
Why not?
Every school is adjusted based on trying to accommodate the bus arrival time. So I know several schools have adjusted their car rider line in the morning because they don't want to interfere with the bus. That's something we ran into at the beginning of the year. So not every school has the exact same time. It would make no sense.
Okay, well, the thing I was, the reason I was asking is because in some, in some cases, I guess there was concern that some of our middle and high schools could have been later because they were holding buses in front of the school, not allowing some of these elementary kids to come in, was what the comments were made to me by drivers and teachers.
Again, I know we ran into those problems at the beginning of the year, but as far as I know, we've adjusted as we needed to throughout the year, which you would expect us to do.
Could we get a list of those times when people are allowed to drop off their children at the schools? Since it's different by each school, I think it'd be good for general information. Thank you.
All right, thank you all so much for the information presented. I know a lot of work has gone into that and we keep moving forward. Keep training drivers, getting them on there, and find those buses wherever we can find them. I appreciate that. Hello, hello, Mr. White.
There, good evening.
Thank you for staying for this. Can I just give a quick intro before you get started on it? And then, oh no, you can stay right there, you don't have to move far. Our second item is, came from the Board of Supervisors meeting. It was a consent agenda, piece of information, essentially requesting the school board to declare the Cliff Farm property a surplus and allow the County of Economic Development to sell the property. Some of the background on that, what I was thinking tonight in the work session format was being, if there are questions for these board members, for our board members, of what we want to, of what you all or we want to know going forward, I feel like work session is always the best possible way to say, what is information that we would like going forward? But I think Mr. White's here willing to give us an overview. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Hazard, members of the school board, Dr. Jones, as well as Dr. Taylor. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide some background information about the Cliff Farm property and to kick off tonight's discussion on the Board of Supervisors' request for the school board to declare Cliff Farm property as surplus and to allow the county to sell the property. All right. First slide, we have the general location map of the Cliff Farm site. And you can see that the major streets are Leland Road and Potomac Road are close by. A little closer? Okay, sorry.
I was going to get there.
Okay, sorry about that. So we have Leland Road and Potomac Run Road are close by, major cross streets. So the Cliff Farm site is 172-acre property. It's in the Falmouth District. There are no schools currently planned in this area in the enrollment accommodation plan. And just in, I'm going to get ahead of this, just in case you need to know, additional analysis is required to determine other potential uses of the property. Okay, so now I want to give you a little background on the November 16th, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting. The Board of Supervisors passed a resolution requesting that the school board declare the Cliff Farm property as surplus and acceptance of a conveyance of the same. Back in 2006, the school board purchased the Cliff Farm property at a cost of $4.8 million for a future high school site with funding appropriated by the county. The Board of Supervisors indicated in a recent resolution that the property is not appropriate for a school site and has inadequate infrastructure and is located in the flight path of Stafford Airport. Board of Supervisors desire to accept the property from the school board, market the property, and use the proceeds for future school capital projects. So that's the kickoff. And if you have any questions on the site or so forth?
Oh, I have a couple of things that I'd like to say.
I don't think that some of the questions we have, you're going to be able to answer, but...
Oh, okay, well, I'll just...
But you kicked it off really well.
Well, thank you, I try.
My first question would be like, why in 2006 did they allow the purchase? Well, they allowed the school to purchase it.
They told the school.
And now they're, and now they're asking for it to be returned. That doesn't make sense to me.
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
Oh, yeah.
I was there.
Okay.
Here, here.
Do you want me to answer that?
Wait, let's hold it back your first.
So way back when, when the Board of Supervisors told us that the Moncur property, the old Moncur property, wasn't in a good area. They were going to fix that problem for us, so they went out and they bought us a replacement parcel for us to relocate the school. Fantastic. After we built Moncur, we transferred the property over back to the Board of Supervisors and now they have a school site that they still own, okay? I've been an advocate to sell this forever. For as long as I've been involved, whether it was on the CIP Advisory Committee or sitting on this very board, I advocated for selling it. Two things that are upsetting me right now with this whole conversation. First thing is, is everything that we set up the three-on-three committee to discuss and iron out between the two boards was completely circumvented. That's the number one. And then the number two is, is that they're not offering to buy us. We're trying to build high school number six and we're talking about just getting rid of this and allowing another entity sell it for us for economic development purposes. The parcel's not worth anything, so that is on them. If they asked us to purchase it, that's fine. We still need high school number six. Sell it, I don't care what you do with it. But we need another parcel to replace that one before I ever would agree to signing off on this. So that's all I want to say for public record. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Ms. Haley, would you like to give the history lesson?
Doesn't seem like 15 years ago.
It was by fast.
At the time, we had about $5 million in carryover funds, what we call carryover funds, which really aren't carryover unless they're appropriated. And the, as I recall, okay, to the best of my recollection, we were advised that we could get the carryover funds appropriated to the schools if we use them to purchase the Cliff Farm site. At the time, the vote was six to one to purchase it. So you can imagine who voted against it. Okay, but I didn't, that, just my personal feeling at the time was that it wasn't worth the money. It wasn't going to be an appropriate school site. And even if it were an appropriate school site, it was way more land than we needed. But the consensus of the board was, we're not going to get this money back unless we buy the site so we can buy it and hold it. But the fact that it was in the flight path, that was one of the arguments against using that funding to buy the site. I mean, that was a big issue. And I think if you go back in the record, you'll see that, you know, that there was way in from the, I think it was FAA, I mean, there was a lot of input into that. And the final determination was that, yes, it's in the flight path, but it can be used for a site. So, you know, school boards change. And the school board at that time, you know, decided that it was in the interest of the schools to purchase it. But since that time, we've built, when we looked at Stafford High School, we looked at the Cliff Farm site. We've looked at the Cliff Farm site, you know, several times over these past 15 years. And the determination has always been, it's not worth the investment in the infrastructure. We'd have to build a bridge, we'd have to bring the utilities, we'd have to build the roads. There's just so much money we'd have to put in that it wasn't economically feasible to use it as a school site. My concern with this approach is similar to Ms. Hollerback's in that, you know, I didn't learn about it until I saw it on the agenda. I mean, what kind of communication, you know, is this? This is something that would have been a perfect topic for the three-on-three, to have that discussion. Or at least, you know, a chairman, the chairman call. This is something we're going to be talking about. Can you alert your board? And, you know, let's have some discussion. So I don't want to, I don't want to put that concern though ahead of the bottom line. And the bottom line is, if the schools can come out of this with something that we can actually use, such as two turf fields in schools that have waited for many years, or, you know, any number of things that we would reasonably not get to on our 3R list or, you know, in the CIP, then why not? You know, we have to put aside, you know, we don't like the way it was done and look at, you know, what is the value of this to the school? Are we going to hold on to this property that for 15 years we've determined, we being various boards, have determined it's not going to make a good school site? Or do we surplus it and get something back for it? But I agree with Ms. Hollerback. Just like we had an MOU with the Moncur school, purchasing the land and surplusing it, we would, we would need an MOU with this one. And I think the school should have, you know, a say in where that funding would be used.
Thank you, Ms. Haley, for the history lesson. I appreciate it. I personally am getting a little tired of the Board of Supervisors bypassing any communication with the school board and then decreeing that we should do something. I agree with you that holding on to a piece of property that doesn't serve our needs is not in our best interest, especially when we do need turf fields and tracks and we need renovations at Hartwood and we need renovations at Drew Middle School. And I think there has to be a clear understanding of what we can use these funds for. And do we have any idea what the value of this property currently is?
We have not done an appraisal on the property yet.
I don't think it's going to be 4.8 million. Sorry.
And I just, I just wanted to also add that the property does cost us some money. I mean, we've recently had to have the property mowed and we've had to put up some barriers because, in order to be good neighbors. And so it is not free to just have the property sitting there being unused. But I do agree with my fellow board members that it would be nice to have a sense of what it's worth. But we need to understand that it might be worth something different if the Board of Supervisors zones it in a different way. And so it may be worth more for them in the future than it is for us currently.
And at least keeping it in the urban services area, I think, was a good thing. I thank Mr. White and Mr. Anderson and Mr. Fulmer for going and sitting through two different meetings across the street to argue for that. Because to me, that was always a way to keep it more, more of its value was to have it maintained in the urban services area. I do think that the, there has to be a MOU or some kind of parameters set for this sale. I would hate to see the property sold in a way that then, oh, well, then there's this fee that goes as a finder's fee and this part goes to economic development. And all of a sudden, the proceeds whittle down to $100,000. Not to say that it's $100,000 more than we have today. But I think that, and I'm hopeful that through the next board and next, you know, and through all the leadership and the relationships that you've all been building across the street, that we can perhaps U-turn some of this surprise tactics in the future. I think that it serves our community best as well. Because when we work together, we also want to make sure that, you know, the right thing. I mean, 172 acres is a lot of land. So there may be some worth, like, and once it's surplus, as Ms. Haley referenced, or as you were saying, the county doesn't have to pay a whole bunch to rezone itself. Like, they pay zero. Unlike anybody else who would come in to do it, it's very expensive. So there may be some ways there. So I think that, yes, go ahead, Ms. Randall.
I wanted to say, though, I agree, I knew about the history part because working on CIP, we learned a lot about that. But I would definitely say with the, you know, it would be nice to see some of the 3R list items taken care of. But I think I feel a little bit in the same vein as Mrs. Hollerback and that we want to make sure that we have, we have on our CIP list upcoming schools. And I would like to make sure in, you know, in an area where we're finding it struggles to get the pieces that are good for our schools, not just given for a school, is something that I feel a little more strong about, is making sure we got a land grab out of this. Thanks.
I know we've talked a lot about a land bank. I think that that is a concept we keep talking about. Well, let me, let me say, it's a single conversation. It's a school board conversation. But I truly hope we can work with the, we can't, we've got to recognize the growth. We've got to start working there. I guess I will look to Dr. Jones. What is really the next step for us, is to react to this? Or do we have any ability to talk about it to say, are you really sure that, how can we be assured that it's going to be used for school projects? That the, that the school board can control that?
Well, I'm just going to go with what I've heard tonight. First of all, I'm wondering if you want to take this back to the three-on-three group. I'm also wondering if you want to put together some kind of written understanding of how you might want to navigate this with the Board of Supervisors in terms of cooperating with them. Those are the two things I've heard. Dr. Taylor may, you know, tomorrow, he may have some different ideas that he might bring. But those are the two I've heard from the board tonight. So if you want staff to kind of start drafting some... So if you want staff to kind of start drafting some kind of written agreement, we're, you know, we could certainly take a look at that.
We can certainly send over even a cover letter from us, just summarizing some of our thoughts and concerns and putting out the handshake of, let's work together for the best. Ms. Haley.
Madam Chairman, I would suggest that, that we respond saying that the school board, you know, is, is willing to enter into further discussion with respect to this request. But I do think our new board is going to have to be involved as well as the new board on the Board of Supervisors because nothing is going to happen immediately. But I, I do think we should put into that, that response that we would want to have a memorandum of understanding, such as the one we had with the, the Moncur property, which I think is a good example. I mean, that thing was even amended a couple of times, you know, as we went along. But that we, we would want to have a memorandum of understanding in effect so that there is a clear understanding on both sides of the street as to what the expectations are and, and how we will proceed. Because I, I don't think it's a bad idea. I, I just think it, it could have been handled in a different matter. But, but, you know, I'm over that. I mean, this, this is a chance for us to actually get something that will benefit the schools. And I, I would not want to lose that opportunity. But I do think this is going to have to be something that, you know, will, you know, that, you know, that is not going to happen overnight.
Dr. Jones, was there a conversation with you or Chris about this? Or like literally was the consent agenda item the first you saw or heard of it?
Not me.
Okay.
Full transparency, it was mentioned of, hey, we're interested. We might look into the Cliff Farm property, maybe find out what its value was. It was like a courtesy they were just letting us know. I'm going to say a month ago, but it was never to the point of, hey, we're asking the school board to turn this property over. So it was, it was mentioned from, from a staff member to myself that they were interested in looking at the property, but in no way did it ever escalate to this level.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate that. All right. Anything else about Cliff Farm that we'd like to say goodbye? All right. All right. Well, thank you all this evening. This meeting is adjourned and we will see, meet together. I never heard what happened with the closed session. Is that not happening tonight? I mean, we can, we can make a motion to go into a closed session on that. I, I didn't amend the agenda to do that because we were meeting sort of in work sessions. I think we have a second opportunity to, to go with that at an appropriate time as opposed to creating a new closed session.
Make a motion.
Let's see what we've got. Let's see, I don't know if I have a... Would you like to make a motion to add that to the agenda on December 14th? I, I don't know if I have language.
I mean, we have, our meeting's until 7:30, right? We have some time.
We have 20 minutes.
Madam Chairman, we approved this agenda. I assume that this request was not going to happen tonight because it was not on the agenda. It would be very atypical to amend the agenda at the end of the meeting and not before it was approved unless there was some emergency that evolved in the past hour.
It's going to be an emergency tomorrow.
Forty minutes.
It's been attempted before, and I'm not going to do it.
I mean, I don't have an objection to putting one on at the next meeting, but I would object to this evening because it should have been put on when the agenda was approved. The agenda could have been amended at that point.
I would just note that I, I put the request in well in advance of this, so it could have been on this agenda, and I was seconded on that.
We don't see those requests.
I will, we will put it on for then December 14th at that time, and we can either meet before or after. We will see what else is on the agenda. I know there's something planned ahead of time, so, but we can, we will work the, the timing accordingly. How about that? All right? All right. All right, then we are adjourned.